Sure, thank you. So we are continuing our discussion on our key performance indicators and we're going to have Dr. Carlisle talk to us tonight to get any questions that you may have. But again, this work is extremely important because it really lays the basis of our strategic plan and we want to get this right and so that way as we move into next year, we can begin aligning the organization to really help us with intentional focus on improvement. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Carlisle.
Hi, thank you all for coming. So you received something on Friday. There's been some, a few additional edits, but I'll quickly go through just where we are in the process and then open it up for comments and any questions that you have. So the first piece, and I think you received this in an email last week, is basically we're at the point where we're completing Phase One, which is the framework for the strategic plan. So the mission, vision, values, the school characteristics and the student characteristics, then the goals, the four goals, the 11 strategies and the related key performance indicator areas. Does not, the next phase we're going into is identifying the baseline targets and then the baseline measures. So where are we right now? Where do we want to be next year? And then how are we going to report out? So that's Phase Two and it's also implementation planning and so we'll move into that almost immediately after tomorrow. What we're basically looking at is what will we measure and then identify the tools and methods, but not yet, as I said, the baseline measures, the timeline or the annual targets. This is just, this is a mocked up board calendar that kind of, that showed what we had planned and some of the changes that were made to the timeline for strategic planning. There was, there was a lot of, there were changes, but we went through this in the agenda planning meetings and had up through the 28th of this month, which is tomorrow, planned out. The other piece I just wanted to show you is that the four impact areas and goal statements, we started presenting those in February, talked about them during one-on-ones, then the March 14th Board Work Session in Board Memos and then again tonight as well as tomorrow. Same thing with the strategies, the performance measures, key performance indicators, we really started discussing in March and in the one-on-ones that we had and in a couple of the Board Memos as well as tonight and tomorrow. And the other documents, the other elements were already approved, as you know. Wanted to level set what we're going to do in conjunction with the state of the schools and that will be an online state of the schools strategic plan summary. So it won't actually be the strategic plan document that you'll receive in the middle of April, but what it'll be is it'll be a status report of here's what's been approved so far so that people can look at that. We also will have the update of all of the feedback that we've gotten to date and there has been a lot. So then in the strategic planning document that you'll receive in April and then approve later in April will be the, a sample of what would be a PDF online, so a printed document that'll be very formal, some of the kinds of things that we looked at when we've been offsite in retreats that have an introduction, a board and superintendent letter, some kind of district profile and then some call to action and some introductory language with each goal. So more narrative, pictures, but that will be only an online version that will be downloadable in a printable PDF. So that would constitute the plan. And then as we go through action planning and establishing the metrics, then you would, the nice thing about doing it online is then we can have the next section also online that's downloadable as well. The input, we went over this a little bit the last time we were together, but we've got, had a lot of conversations between and among ourselves, community feedback survey. We just closed one and have, as a result of what you received on Friday and a few tweaks to what you have today, there's, there were a number of edits. Not substantial, I would say they're more edits of nuance than, and some of it was based on some of the comments from the survey, which I'll go over in a minute. We had a principal focus group, Stratford Cluster Parent Meeting, M&amp;A Focus Group, Mayor's Parent Cabinet, Mayor's Teacher Cabinet, SEIU, and then we also had several meetings with Central Office Direct Reports. So in terms of the themes that came back that are reflected in both what you got Friday and a few changes to what you have today, are people, they received the goal statements and the strategies. They did not receive the key performance in deck categories or actions. And so as such, they felt that they were way too broad and they wanted to see the detail and wanted to see what the measures wanted, what the measures included. So there was also skepticism, a lot of skepticism, are we really going to do this? Skepticism about the ability to walk the talk. So you say you're going to do this, are we really going to do it? Are we going to change practice? If we say we have respect in our, if respect is in the goals or the strategy statements are in the values, how is that going to show up? How are we going to monitor whether or not it does show up? There was also concern about the balance with two, they felt too many things or what's going away and just understanding the prioritization, which is what follows because we will be looking at, well, what are we doing in the first year? What are we doing, expect to do in the second? What do we expect to do in the third? So that we see where those dependencies are. But I've always said educators are very concrete thinkers and, and it's, they want that detail and we're building it. And unfortunately, if we snapped our fingers and just gave it to everybody, that would be an issue as well. But I think with the actions and the measures and some of the, and some of the edits, it addresses these concerns. On the one hand, concern about student equity being insufficiently supported or addressed. On the other hand, given too much attention. Like we have too many restorative practices now, there's actually no consequences. So you kind of, you get the two sides. The, the other thing is when we talk about accountability, are we coupling it with support, respect, communication and effective leadership? Some of the strategies were felt to be awkwardly placed and so you may have noticed that they, there are now four strategies under the student area instead of three and that was because of a lot of feedback we received. There's also a shift in placement in our people where what comes first is the work environment instead of HR's capacity because it was just felt like what the kinds of place, the kind of place in which I work is most important to me as an individual employee. The number of performance measures and so again, you see that we went with leading measures as well as the ones that we will be monitoring as a leadership team. And then some people want to see specific organizations named and they might be affiliated with those organizations and we were really trying to do, have a balance and not start naming organizations because then for sure, we're going to leave some off. And then the skepticism about HR's ability to change and be able to do what is needed. That was, those were generally in broad strokes, the themes. Sometimes there was, we didn't understand this word or this isn't sufficient and so that was some of the edits, those were some of the edits of nuance. Any questions about that? Okay. So again, the draft goals, which you will vote on tomorrow. The first goal, students. The promotion of active student engagement was very important, people felt. They feel that it connotes motivation. So that was something people asked for is to look at how, the way in which students are engaged and motivated in the classroom. Another piece was the pre-K through 12, to clarify that we're talking consistently about pre-K through 12 students. And then we had in our measures, a listing of what we meant of all backgrounds and programs and rather than list it in every measure and every action, we put it in the goal. So that's why it says from all backgrounds and programs. In terms of our people, there was a real interest in, in addition to the collaboration and shared accountability, that there was this idea of being valued, supported, valued and supported. So those words were added. The organization goal has pretty much stayed the same. And the community goal, the interest was in identifying family members and guardians. So not just parents because to recognize that students are going to have different home environments. Then the latter part of this goal has to do with, could we really have the kind of impact that we were saying we would have on the greater Nashville? And so we basically shortened that to say MNPS's contribution to greater Nashville and that is more measurable in terms of what happens with our students or how many people we employ or those kinds of things.
And Dr. Carlisle, how many people, how many people actually gave feedback?
So at different times, it's about 450 each time we sent out a survey. And so it wasn't a huge amount of feedback, but it helped us understand whether or not we, it was clear what we were trying to say.
But I just point that out for the, for the greater public to know that as we went through this process, there was an intent to listen and then hopefully if they're watching, because I know a lot of times there's a, there's always that feedback, you know, are people really listening to us? If we say something, doesn't matter. And I hope this shows the public, at least our intent and our commitment to if you give us feedback, it doesn't go on deaf ears, that there is an adjustment, that we do look at it and see where, where it makes sense and then bring it back for, for more comment and discussion, you know? But this, this wasn't a, when this is done, I hope people feel like this wasn't a top-down process where someone just said, here's your, here's your goals, here's what you should be doing and now just do it. There were, there were multiple opportunities to, to really engage and we need that engagement and I think it's making a stronger document.
And I think it was testing for understanding and sometimes people wanted more than to just be tested for their understanding, but how, how we did that. The other pieces, as we go forward into the action planning, we're thinking about ways to involve principals and teachers and other personnel in the project planning so that we would get greater input as well. Okay, so Goal One, just go quickly through these four strategies. Now there are four instead of three, as I mentioned. Again, the pre-K through 12 emphasis. The, there's a, there are, there is pushback on the word rigor. Lots of people don't like that, but they've also asked for a definition of terms and I wouldn't say people, I'd say there have been anecdotally a handful of respondents or focus group participants who push back on the notion of rigor because they want to make sure that it's balanced with support. And that's where I think Strategy Three and Strategy Two comes in, in this area. So then the equitable access, so now we say across MNPS schools and clusters because there was an interest in defining, what is the scope of this plan? Does it include charter schools? Does it include, you know, who, who does it include? And that when we talk about equity, are we talking about across school clusters? So I just want to point out that that, that was one change. Then on Strategy Three, School Culture and Climate, we added physical, social, physical to social and emotional needs, whether or not we're looking at PE or nursing or some other things, it was felt that we needed to take, if we're talking about the whole child. And then we moved from the community area, this expanding and strengthening the quality of educational programs. And again, you see pre-K through 12. Okay, so I think what I'm going to do is go through all the strategies and then come back and we can look at the KPIs. So then for Goal Two, again, we reordered, we flipped Strategy, what was Strategy One and Strategy Two, I mean, excuse me, Three, so that a positive work and physical environment comes into play in Strategy P1. The staff capacity to, through implementation of a professional learning program. And there was an interest in saying coaching and mentoring, not just training and performance management. And then the last one and looking at Human Resource Department's ability to recruit and for some reason, we forgot hire, but recruit, hire, develop, evaluate and retain diverse employees at all levels. Any questions on that one? Okay, so then in terms of organizational excellence, we added communication to Strategy O1 because that's one way in which we would show, demonstrate organizational excellence. And then the second one still focuses on collaborative culture of data analysis and accountability to advance goals across the system. And then the last set focuses on, again, the change in wording to family members and guardians to encourage support of their child's education, contribution to decision-making discussions and then that they are actually receiving and aware of certain messages from the system. And then C2 changed, is community and business partners instead of just business partners or just community. Any questions on that one? Okay, so now we'll go to the KPIs. So identified five leading measures under S1 and this is really the part of the first goal that very much deals with academic performance. So one is greater than average growth. One has focused on, the second KPI focuses on achievement. One focuses on, and the third one focuses on reducing gaps. The fourth one on meeting college and career readiness benchmarks in high school and then the fifth one on the graduation rate, a cohort graduation rate. And obviously to get to these, there's going to be a lot of other things that we're monitoring regularly. Any comments about this? Questions about why those five rose to the top? And I think when, the second document I sent over the weekend showed you what secondary measures would be and some that would be implementation measures. Okay, I'm going to move on?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the access piece has to do with percentage of exceptional ed students reaching proficiency in reading and math, as well as English learner students reaching proficiency in their language development. That changed. Increased percentage of students taking AP Cambridge Post-Secondary Honors and IB courses. Those are the three that we identified in terms of equitable access. Now remember, there's also S, the new S4 that talks about program access also looks at program fit and the kinds of things to which students and their families have access across school clusters. Any questions about this one or comments? So then S3 focuses on climate and culture and physical, social and emotional needs. And the three that are the leading measures, one is perceptual data. A lot of these pieces have to do with survey data or other kinds of what I would call collective measures, like the health index is, is an amalgamation of several different things that our school health office monitors and that is not specifically nursing. And then we also look at the extent to which students are suspended and for certain kinds of incidents and then the disproportionality component and making sure that we're tracking student groups that, not tracking them in the old way, but monitoring what's happening to them, those groups that are disproportionately represented in, or among suspensions or other kinds of discipline issues. Any, any questions about this one?
Yeah. Okay, so in, I'm looking at the leading measures, increased percentage of schools showing evidence of positive gains using multiple sources of perceptual data that assess culture and climate. Are those student surveys primarily? Is that what we're looking at there?
Yes. So, so, and so there are different survey tools that we're looking at right now that are, that examine incidence of bullying, examine, does a child feel safe, other, other kinds of things that will give us a gauge from year to year, how, how, how students feel about their learning environment.
And what, what do we do with tripod going forward? Have you talked to Dr. Changus about that? And this, this kind of gets back to, you know, the academic performance framework and the various measures within, but you know, the tripod data, I've never, which is student survey data, I've never had a good handle on, is it reliable? Is it effective? Do we use it? But what surveys are we talking about or is that to be determined?
So right now, I know that we're looking at a few and I, we don't, we haven't selected which ones yet and so that would come into play as, as we go forward with if, if we agree that we want to look at how students perceive their environments, then, then we say, okay, what are the tools that we're currently using? And, and there are a couple. I'm not as up to date on, on that one as I am on the academic ones, but I know Dr. Changus is and that there, Dr. Nurseys, have you guys been talking about student surveys as well? I thought so.
We just sent a. We just sent a communication out to the system concerning the survey that will be replacing the TEL survey, which is a survey that was given within the schools, not throughout the entire organization. So Dr. Changus sent that out last week and, which is a much shorter survey, but still getting specific information that is needed. We've been really working on trying to make sure we can get a higher rate of response. As you can imagine, the TEL survey is much, much longer and we've also engaged in the principal advisory group, some feedback on some of those components. So that's, that's the work that has been going on and we're going to be giving out that survey quarterly, which Dr. Changus and his team are doing. So the big conversation on why we're making the huge shift was because we wanted to make sure we can get a higher rate of response, to have much less questions, but some targeted pieces to be able to, to help improve the system.
So that's for teachers and principals, right?
That's correct.
Right, and so there's, we're right now talking about students, but have you been talking?
Yes, and so for the student piece, we're, we're looking at a group that Dr. Changus and Tina just worked on, it's a group called Panorama, which is working on giving surveys to kids, whereas giving a much more 360 kind of view, where students are able to provide feedback on teachers' performance to see, almost like in college and how, you know, whether they're getting the content or not. So those are the pieces that we're working on now and that's happening in the testing office.
Yep. So thanks, you know, for bringing up TEL and I'll park my questions about teacher surveys until we get to the next section, but I guess I'd like to get a stake in the ground for, you know, just a separate, kind of more robust conversation about exactly what instruments we're using to measure customer satisfaction, that we're using to measure employee satisfaction.
Absolutely.
And those are, you know, really our only true sources of qualitative data that's, that's out there. So I think being really intentional about, you know, what we're doing and how we're ministering it would be great. So I'll park my TEL question until we get to the next section. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions on, on these? Okay.
Second, the, the increased percentage of student seventh reading improvement on student health index outcomes. I'm not being loud enough. I was just going to ask a similar question and I see that we're coordinating our efforts with other social service agencies, but I think this was the one we were concerned that we may not be able to.
There was a different one that we were, we were concerned about being able to monitor absences by, of students based on why they were absent. Was it for a chronic health situation? So we actually went with this one because it's, it is data that we currently collect and that we can monitor, though clearly as we increase nursing services, we hope, that we also would want to look at, does that, how does that affect the management of illness? And I know that's what the nurses will be collecting, but those would more likely be implementation metrics because then as we look at attendance and some other things like that, that's going to tell us, are students healthy and in school? Is there disease being managed and has nurses, a decreased ratio of nurses to students, has that helped it?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it might make more sense to, to measure this by the services that we're providing. And that's just a thought because, you know, when you look at a child's performance in school, the child's performance is affected by two-thirds outside of school factors and one-third in-school factors. So I'm just wondering how much we should take ownership. I'm all for this. I think it's a, I mean, I think we need to be, keep monitoring it, keep an eye on it, but I wonder if we should change the way we measure it as opposed to measuring how the child's health improves? Maybe measure what services we're providing to the child? I don't know. I don't know if anyone else agrees.
Let me bring to you or send to you tomorrow, the, what this health index outcome composite looks at.
Okay.
And those, so each year, what happens is the, the student health index, they, they identify goals and then those, that's the data that they collect, you know? So they're, they're looking at, did we measure BMI? Did, did we actually monitor or conduct physicals for sports? So some things like that that are within our control.
Okay.
But I'll make sure to better clarify it for you. And then we can decide, do we, do we make this a secondary, a secondary measure? Okay, so then the last one is focusing on the educational programs. So it's another component of equity and this is looking at a positive or strong program fit with their child's educational needs and then retention in MNPS. Any questions about that one?
Retention, we're going to measure that by tier.
Again, we will, so when you said, you said tier, you mean grade level?
Elementary, middle.
Yeah, okay. We consider, yeah, it would be very important to disaggregate it based on the attrition that we experience at middle school? Yes. Okay, so then Goal Two, in terms of a positive work in physical environment, this is basically staff morale satisfaction and engagement, which is measured by Gallup. Any questions about that?
Chris. So this is the, the TEL part. So when I heard earlier that we're replacing TEL with a shorter survey that we think's going to have more coverage and more participation, is that a function of the state shifting instruments or is this a decision that we're making as a district to go in a different direction? And if so, are we sure that we're sure that we want to do that?
Yeah, both. We had some conversation because we did anticipate as we talked with the state, kind of what they were shifting to specifically with the TEL, not making it a requirement. And the other conversation we also had was around just the response rate of, is the information that they've been asking for schools and the organization getting to a space where we can actually make changes? And so when we did some of the research around that, you know, we had response rates as low as 20%, which is, you can't really make decisions based on some of those pieces. So Dr. Changus and the team, all of us got together to have a conversation on what we thought some of those factors were. And we've also been in conversations with groups like Gallup and some of these other folks that have done surveys where there's been higher change of, they would get higher response rates, like 90%. And so they've been having conversations with us around that. So that's when the testing office team said, had some, they said they've had some ideas for a while about what are some pieces that they could do. And so then they put the proposal together and we had that conversation and we started to engage principals and teachers in different groups in our advisory about some of those changes. And so to answer your question, I'm probably giving you like a whole lot of information. Yeah, so and the state, yes, the state is fine with that. So because they're moving away from TEL, they are giving districts options around how they go about gathering information. I don't know how familiar you guys are with the TEL survey, but it's like very long bunch of questions and just the amount of rate of response that we've been getting around that has been low. And they're also targeted to specific things. So we talked about the type of options we can provide to schools around those pieces. And Dr. Joseph has been also pushing us around, trying to make sure we can look at different set of questions to get higher response rates to make better decisions around change. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this one? Okay, P2, looking at staff capacity through professional learning and so, and it basically, the focus is on building staff capacity. So we, the, the measures, increased number of high-quality certificated and non-certificated staff in all assignments, teachers and principals achieving at a level four or five status on their team evaluations, and then increased percentage of non-certificated and non-school-based certificated employees achieving the two highest levels on performance evaluation. And you'll recall that we, I mean, our first goal is to make sure that, that we do them and we do them well and that everybody, I'm talking about the third KPI there, so that what that system looks like is comparable to the way in which we're, we're holding teachers and principals accountable. Did you have a question, Anna?
I do. How long have we been using that particular survey?
How long have we been using that particular sort of measurement team? How long have we been using the team evaluation?
Do you know how long we've been using team?
I think the state law passed 2010, maybe? That established the team, that established that, was that the correct?
Yeah, it was deployed in the 2011, 2012 school year amid much consternation that year.
Has it gotten any better as far as, is it a warm and fuzzy yet, or no? No? Okay, you answered my question.
Is it warm and fuzzy?
It's a question of calibration, so they've been making adjustments every year, but districts are still kind of required to do calibration around when they're gathering evidence in those pieces. I mean, we've done a pretty good job on making sure there's alignment between the teacher component as well as the principal component, because both are having the same evaluation system. And our, our folks in human resource have been working a lot to do that alignment. That was actually even before we got on board. And so as we've been having more work with the principal supervisors supporting the schools, there've been more calibration around that part of the work.
Thank you.
Anna, I was just going to say.
You, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say that I think a lot of people are frustrated with the team evaluation, but my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that even if we were to choose a different model, we have limited options because the percentages that are used to measure growth and achievement, we, we still have to follow those percentages, and that, that's kind of the issue. And so even if we switched to a different model, I don't know that it would really necessarily right, change anything for the teachers, but you all can correct me. Okay.
And you'll notice that there are a number of the high-level actions that address making sure that people are well-prepared to administer team, that there's, that we've given training, and so on and so forth, and that a lot of those kinds of constructive comments came from teachers.
Yeah. On the evaluation, I would just add that the only flexibility that I think we've got under state laws to kind of take a different approach with classroom observation, and as Ms. Frog pointed out, that the structural parts of the data are not, you know, especially flexible. But we've got somebody in our midst, not in the room tonight, but who is an expert in that observation instrument, David Kovach, so I'd love to hear his point of view on, you know, the evaluation instrument at some point. He's got, as I recall, a lot of, a lot of experience with, with the organization that put together the rubric that's used with the, the classroom observation, NIET, National Institute for Excellence in Teaching. So would love to, you know, not tonight or work session around the strategic plan, but just some other time when it makes sense to hear more about evaluation implementation ongoing.
Great. Any other questions or comments on, on this strategy? Okay. So then there's the one on optimizing the human resources department's ability to recruit, hire, develop, evaluate, and retain. And so, again, there's a satisfaction piece, but this is particularly targeting organizational support, service, and responsiveness provided by human resources. So those who come into contact or are customers of human resources would have the opportunity to indicate what their experience was. And then there was also the increased diversity and quality of, of all staff, and the percentage of high-quality and diverse staff retained. Those were the three leading measures that we came up with. Any comments or questions about those? There obviously will be a lot of other implementation measures, like did we, how many positions did we hire by March 31st? What happened by the start of school? Those are all implementation measures that, that the department will be looking at and that we'll be monitoring to know whether or not we're getting here.
I don't have the council, the great city schools KPIs committed to memory, but as I recall, there are, when it comes to recruitment and retention of, of highly effective teachers and employees, they have it kind of, you know, percentages over a period of X-years, Y-years, Z-years. I mean, do we want, does, is the ultimate product going to delineate in that?
Well, so one thing we could do is indicate, have that be a secondary measure. I mean, if you, if you want it to be a primary or leading measure, we can say, we can indicate...
I see it there, secondary. Never mind.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no problem. Okay. So then the last, not the last, the, the third goal, focusing on organizational excellence, looks at efficient and effective operations, customer service, and communications across the district, and then the collaborative culture. We went through this before, so. Okay. So the three KPIs for O1 focus on, again, a satisfaction index with all departments, so that what we're trying to get to is a point where we can, where we, we think of both internal as well as external customers and that, the, the service orientation. And then there's also the complaints, which are going to typically come from those external to the system, but not exclusively, and then the parent satisfaction with schools and department services. So we need to, there's, there's a lot of satisfaction tools that we have to look at and then administer, because it's, it's going to be one of the primary ways that, that we're able to get feedback. Any questions on this one? So I think it's important here to also note that there are a, a number of metrics that Chris's department looks at on a regular basis to say, how are they doing with transportation? And those would all either be what we would call secondary measures, or they would be the implementation measures that are telling them, did we proactively change the oil on X number of buses within the scope of the allowable time, and so on and so forth. Do you like that example, Chris? You're looking amused. Okay. Any questions on, on that one? All right. So then O2, the collaborative culture of data analysis is, is really a pretty qualitative measure, which is, do we start organizing our meetings around this? Are we reporting out when we say we're going to report out? Are, and are, are we being transparent with our, our reporting out? And so is it available? Do, do we go forward with the dashboard so that people actually see the data regularly and based on the schedule? Any questions? Comments? Okay. So then the last area focuses on parents and family members and their involvement in their child's support. So we're looking at percentage of family members and guardians represented in formal parent organizations, which implies that we, we actually want to look at increasing the schools that have formal parent organizations and formalized involvement, and then how satisfied parents are. Things like signing on to the family portal would be implementation metrics, so, but it does tell us, are people involved in other ways with their child's education? And then the satisfaction with communication and engagement efforts. And then C2, community satisfaction with MNPS, as well as looking at partnership memorandum of understanding that are tied to the strategic plan. So how many partnerships do we have? And are the, do, first of all, do we have MOUs? And then, second of all, are they tied to the strategic plan? And it's, it's really an alignment metric.
Going back to C1, increase in the percentage of family members and guardians represented in formal parent organizations. I think, you know, that's arguably one of the single most important things we could do, and I think it gets back into issues of equity. I'll use my family, my daughter's school as an example. A very, I would say, richly resourced PTO that can do a lot of different things because the parents give actively. I think if we're going to really do, you know, PTO expansion, do it well, we need to figure out how to bake that in to the budget somehow, because not all families are as lucky as the ones that go to my daughter's school. So I just want to call that out as a budget item in the interest of equity.
Any other input on C1 or C2?
On the first, on KPI, increasing the percentage of family members and guardians. Just as a side note, at NSBA conference last weekend, I went to the Cube luncheon, and we had a dynamite speaker. Her name was Judge Glenda Hatchett from the Atlanta area, and she has formed an, a nonprofit around that very topic right there, and she had some really great ideas, and so I got her book.
Great.
I'll be bringing back some information.
Okay.
About PTO expansion?
Pardon me?
About PTO expansion?
Not PTOs primarily, but having guardians and, and family members in the school and interaction with, with each other. And, I mean, it was, it was phenomenal. It really was.
Well, if you give it to Cameo or David, we can get the link and, and then find out more about it.
I'm happy to do that.
And if you don't measure it, it doesn't get done. So that's one, another reason why this is here, and it's really important. Amy, did you have a comment? Okay. So that brings us to what you already approved, which I will not go through, because I've probably done it every meeting that we've had since December. Any, anything else you want to cover before we disband? Thank you, everybody.
Great work. Thank you.
Be there. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.
All right.